We would like to welcome you to our October 2 meeting. What a wonderful group of citizens and others that we have here tonight. And for those of you that are new to us, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and our normal procedures. I have the flag to the flag. I'm gonna call on Councilman Elrod for that. And this is my last. This time, will you please join me as we stand? Councilman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Benson.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you on this evening for another opportunity, Lord, to serve the citizens of McDonough. We invoke your presence and your blessings upon the proceedings on this evening, and we ask that you will grant us with wisdom and understanding. We ask that you will endow us all with the ability to lead and to serve with a servant's heart. And it's in Jesus' precious and mighty name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much again for being here. Chicken. No. We have a couple of comments. I'm gonna call on another straight Fred Garland, if he would like to introduce to the council. You've made a statement. Fred, would you do it honestly?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lauren. Come up quick. Uh, Lauren, Lauren Singleton is our new Main Street manager. She's been on board now a week, almost two and a half weeks. And she's doing a wonderful job so far by us. And I can see that it's one of the more creative things to keep in track of all of our projects and who's responsible for them. So she's already started with the innovation. She comes to us from the city of Rivendell, where she was events planning, and she also has a personal background and has graduated at Clayton State University. So we're glad to have her.
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to the family. Thank you, I appreciate it. Is this your first run down Main Street?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So you do not have that background. Just go ahead. Are you not? Well, we've trained a lot of good people that have moved on unfortunately to other, you know, places, but...
Well, I'm looking forward to the challenge.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you Fred for sharing and making use of this. All goes well there, I suppose. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Put your cares down. I guess I'll get some glasses. Approve of the agenda. Subject to this, ladies and gentlemen. On the consent agenda, we want to add item 6C. And I believe you have a copy of it. 6C approved the execution of closing documents for the purchase of 8.41 acres of property within Hickory County, Georgia parcel 9101008,000 at a purchase price of $6,000. This will be paid by, from Splot Street Fund. That's the first change. The second change, if you'll turn to page two of the agenda, I've added 11A. 11A is a change order for Llewellyn Construction relative to, I think, out of Landmark Park. And the next change and modification is an addition, 12A Executive Session for Real Estate, OCGA section 50 dash 14 dash 3B1. And having mentioned those changes, I entertain a motion that the agenda be approved.
Seven.
Second. Motion made in second. Anybody have any question? Any reservation? Any comment? Here at this price, please restate the motion in a second.
The motion is to approve tonight's agenda with the following amendment. We are adding to the consent agenda 6C, the approval of, to approve the execution of the closing documents for the purchase of 8.41 acres of property within Hickory County, Georgia parcel number 09101008000 at a purchase price of $6,000, which will be paid from Splot Street Fund. Also, we will be adding 11A, which is a change order for Llewellyn Construction. And also, we'll be adding 12A Executive Session for Real Estate, OCGA 50 dash 14 dash 3B1.
Okay. This time, ladies and gentlemen, will you please hold on that motion in a second. Those in favor, see if by the raise of hand, hold the lights out.
Seven in favor, ladies.
Fair enough. Thank you so much. Let's move down to the consent agenda. As you recall, we've got a 6B. We've got A, B, and 6B. And with that, I entertain a motion for consent agenda to be approved. Have a second. Have a second.
A, D, and 6C.
Ma'am?
A, D, and 6C.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. We've got a motion in second. Anybody have any questions about approving the consent agenda? Here at this price, please restate the motion in a second before we go.
The motion is to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 6C, which has already been read. If that's all right.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion in second, please then keep the raise of hand. Likewise, those in opposition, I thank you.
Seven in favor.
Thank you so much. Now let's move down to Mr. Hurd. Right here we have the community development item that's in Fred Elrod's traffic. And after Mr. Ben Hubert is here, I'll give you a chance first to lay this out for him, and then I'll call him after, any comments. Go ahead, Mr. Hurd.
Hey, Mr. Hurd, the council will turn to your exhibits, 7A. You have your summary regarding requests on the applicants. What I'm putting up on the screen for the viewers regarding the location, I'm gonna go to Google Earth in just a moment. But on the Google Earth, before we go there, I want to show you the relationship regarding the requests to the adjacent properties. Here's the crossroads of State Route 155, also known as Decatur Road. Then also, here is Larson Street. We and the, in your community development department, see this as a gateway to the downtown districts. I'm gonna reference it shortly as the downtown district city gateway. This is your subject property, and what the eligibility comes by way of the properties that I've highlighted here. This property was rezoned in 1992. This property was disowned in 1973. Unfortunately, I've not been able to find any date regarding this property, but I'm gonna be showing you shortly the as-built conditions. And then this property, which has eligibility based on these here. And then we seek to establish a boundary at this point, looking at the additional land uses, which is residential, particularly R100, which I've color-coded in the blue. But again, at this area, city gateway. So your request is to go from R100 to ONI. Okay. This is what was referenced as your city gateway. This is the intersection of Decatur Road and 155. So we're gonna scroll around. We'll take a look to see the existing as-built of the properties, the improvements that have been made, plus also the streetscape and landscaping, pedestrian pathways, traffic synchronization. Then regarding, we scroll around, this goes into your downtown district. That's why we're referencing as this downtown district city gateway. And then the improvements that have been made by the property owners. And this is where we start here. This is the property that was rezoned in 1992, that you would know as the Riker property. Then we're going to then move up to the next property. You can see the difference in these. These were kept, the first two residential in appearance, but then when we get to this property, then we had a departure from that of the residential appearance. And then we have the parking area in front, and then a building that is not residential in appearance. And that ties into the conditions that your professional planning staff has put before you in your packet, and also your planning commission then recommended approval on. And this relates to the design guidelines or the development standards. So going back to the property itself, goes back to the intersection of the first one, which was the one on the first property zoned in 1992. The request is to keep the building in its original capacity with the improvements required by code. If you so approve for the property to be rezoned to ONI, it would be remain residential in appearance. Fortunately, in this site, we have quite a bit of landscaping that is present on site that provides for visual, excuse me, for screening and buffering to the adjacent properties that are zoned R100. And again, this is where we're talking about the brake line along the 155 corridor to the additional properties or surrounding properties that are zoned R100. And then we come back to the intersection. You can see the difference between this property where there is not, you have the major thoroughfare road, 155 sidewalk pedestrian area, and then also then the paved parking lot, and then the built structure. The difference on this property is that all of this would remain intact, undisturbed, and then the parking would be to the side rear, as you see on your screen. It's in your packets regarding the as-built conditions. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Rodney. This time, Mr. Hubert, you have been, how about coming up and joining us here? Give you an opportunity to share anything relative to this proposal with us. We welcome you to our council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And just give you an opportunity to say anything, and the council may ask some questions.
Well, I don't know, I think Rodney's pretty much covered it all.
You sure, Rodney?
You know, I've had a conversation with an engineer. I've had a conversation with the insurance people. I've had a conversation with accountants. So that's kind of the type of people I'm looking at for in here, something like that. I haven't got, you know, an actual tenant title now, but that's the sort of thing that I'm looking at. Want to blend in with the neighborhood. Kathy, my wife, has talked to some of the neighbors, and they didn't seem to have any problem with it. They're talking about doing, you know, some buffer planning, you know, I think along the east boundary there, and fill in some other stuff that, you know, as needed. We're certainly open to that. We're trying to try to get everything to blend in, not set that apart.
Uh, council persons? Uh, council members, anybody coming?
I think Rodney did a great job. It will fit natural right in there.
I think so.
Like it's supposed to be there. So I'm all for it, look forward to it, have a good tenant there.
Yeah.
Does the building across the street have like a wall in between?
Building across the street, she's talking about whether the den lot or the, is it den lot that we're, we're home and family?
Is there a wall?
I don't think so.
Now, there's a, there's a fence on their east side that connect or kind of breaks them up in the house on the east side. But there's not a wall anywhere.
And that was a block, Paulson's office, and it was, you know, the residential in appearance, if you like.
Do you think you're willing to put a fence up if it's an issue with the neighbors?
Sure. Sure. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Did you have a question?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else? I think Rodney did a pretty good job today. All right.
Is that clean living?
All right, that's right, clean living, that's right there. I'll sue Rodney. We don't have, this will be on for a vote on, put it here on the panel.
Yes, that is correct. This is advertised.
Just give you back the point.
Uh, I'll probably have to get somebody to do that. I've got, I've got three of them.
Oh, yes. That is clean living.
That is, I guess that is. But anyway, we, we'll just be sure they're here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get Rodney.
Cause we, we usually try to do those up front, right?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, thanks a lot. See y'all.
Come and stand here.
Okay, Rodney, I'd like introducing this item to us. Mike Curran, that appears to be Frank and Windsor Estates. If you kind of lead off, and then I'll invite, Mike, come up.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and members of the council. Because of the sensitivity that we had with the recent activity occurred December of 2013, all of you have an official copy of the ordinance which you approved on that day. It's also in your packet as a supplement. And then I have included in the staff report, which is reviewed by your planning commission on December 3. And we have made, we have put forward communication efforts to the residents who were concerned, and have clarified to them that the city, what's before you as the mayor and council is only the modification of one condition, however, regarding the amenity site. And that is what is identified in your packet. And we have made it clear also at the planning commission, we did not have anyone from the as far as concerned citizens in attendance at the planning commission meeting on the 3th, that we did make notes and photograph records regarding the information that we, that I just removed. That we're only making one modification, and all the other conditions that were part of the ordinance on that day will be carried over and placed in this ordinance. And so I have also, it's just a refresher for anyone who was not in attendance at those meetings. We are talking about this site here, we know as Windsor Estates. It has been final plotted. The infrastructure that is currently in is the road system. The area of concern is the initial amenity site is lots 1 and 2 here with the approved site in December 2013. However, the applicants will be addressing, due to constraints that were discovered on site, the request is to go back to the original amenity site that was part of the initial 2005 rezoning. That's all I have, Mayor.
But all the build conditions, Senator, correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Always good to have a banker with us, right? We might need some money for you. Anyway, anything you want to share, Rodney?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to, to address the mayor and the council. As was indicated, the original plan on this subdivision was recorded in 2008. At that time, there was a house on site that was intended to be the clubhouse. But through passage of time and vandalism, we had to demolish that house. It was no longer a feasible structure. But that was the location of the original amenity package. In January, there was a request to move the amenity package, as Rodney indicated, to the first two lots on the left as you go into subdivision. As we did more engineering, we found that we were entrusted on floodplain, and we found there were significant engineering problems that were not anticipated. So the request is to move the amenity package back to the original location at the interior, on the interior of the subdivision. That's the only request, not a question of heat changes and building requirements, set backlines, or anything else. Just a change to the location of the amenity package.
What about you, folks? Unless, Fred, any ideas?
Yeah, I think, Ray, I know some of the residents in the area actually prefer to be there personally.
Yeah.
We think so. We think it will turn out better at the, at the old location than it would at the existing location. Uh, I believe there's a hundred twenty-five in the front lawn.
So all the stormwater issues, I noticed there were some stormwater issues early day called in.
We met, we met on site yesterday with Mark Whitley and some other representatives of city. We think we've got that resolved. It just impacted about 10 lots in the back of the subdivision. So I think we've got that resolved.
And so on the first, the lot with the large manor, a young field, that you can market that in the middle of it?
Well, there's a possibility it may be, we may have to do some work with it, but we think it's a possibility. We'll just have to look at it, you close your detail.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that this is council person's district, but I just wanted to say, Mr. Curran, thank you very much, because the highest point of contention for that rezoning was this issue. The majority of the residents that contacted me wanted it back at the old location. So this is, this is absolutely wonderful.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good luck seeing you. I couldn't say this, but she was gonna be in the 20s. It'll be a, a big, and we'll have a couple of very good people express themselves, all against, and welcome you again.
Okay. Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Until you get there.
All right.
We've got some special people there. Steve Egan, Mercer Group. I'm gonna kind of preempt him for a minute. Chief gave me this when he came in, and I had a note about it. Like, you council members that are here, remember, we started a job out here in the worst times in 2008. And I, we had thought about it, and I said, that's a, this is the worst time. I said, if we have seven corporations that join us, I'd be so pleased. We have about 20. And of course, this is 2014. So Leslie, initially, they laid out 25 slots. And those 25 disappeared. She's been out in Presbyterian Church the last two days trying to revamp the gymnasium out there. So we went to, she went from 25 to 35. The other 10 have been put in place. And today, we've got calls from Dougherty County, Cobb County, the FBI, and on and on and on. We're up to 42 companies, public entities, and corporations. Major corporations, ladies and gentlemen, major corporations coming to McDonough on October 24. She's trying to squeeze in one more space, we'll be 43. We're gonna have to utilize the hall, but it's just the most incredible thing, and she deserves all the credit for this hard work she's done. We can't understand where all of it's being filtered to. But if you could see this array of corporations here looking for talent locally here in McDonough, I hope that we'll have a, have a good group there. Last year, we ran into a situation where we know for a fact that three people may manage organizations and corporations here. But if you want to see a list, and we'll try to put that on our webpage, just to show you who these corporations are, I think it'd be astounding. So I just want to recognize, Leslie and Chief, thank you for that. I wouldn't miss that if you hadn't brought this to me, so.
May I just have one request? I think that is absolutely amazing. I think what would, would be beneficial as well is if you could start trying the number of people who are actually receiving employment.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
So that, that would be really, really a good thing for our community to know.
And, you know, we just thought, you know, the minimum 25, and then, as I said, as I, when I was downstairs, that 42 corporations and public entities has come in. But no, that speaks wide, if you have got it right. And I apologize to each of you for that. Thank you, Chief. We've got a young man here, Steve Egan. Steve, we welcome you. You gonna share with us something about him?
Where do you want me to sit?
Sit down, man. Yeah, with you.
We've, we've been doing a lot of digging through your organization, and it's been interesting. We've learned a lot, and it's just at the point where we're starting to get a sense of some emerging issues. And those are things that look like on the surface, if you pass these down, hopefully everyone will get one. We need to dig into, or we might have a finding, or we might have a recommendation, but it's, it's early. And I just wanted to give you this as, as a way for you to know, sort of directionally, where we're heading, both in larger issues, citywide issues, and also in terms of the departments. The first page is sort of what have we done, and why I'm here, and what you asked us to do. And I'm not gonna spend much time on that, other than say, one of the things that's really important to us is under the purpose of today's presentation, the third bullet, if you have something on your heart that you are not seeing listed, please let us know. Could be that it's, we're on top of that, and we just didn't, didn't have the space in two pages, and didn't think to put it down, because they're getting more detailed than this, as we actually write a draft report. If we've missed something, I want you to call it to our attention. The last, at the bottom of the third page, is reminders of my contact information, my phone number, my cell phone, and also we have a website, our email address and Gmail for study comments. The other thing is at the bottom, under project activities, I wanted to make sure you know that we have talked to almost everybody who is a stakeholder employee. And obviously, we've talked to you, we've talked to department heads, we've talked to employees. Employees were very good about filling out questionnaires and surveys. I think we probably have 95% of the employees that either responded. In most cases, when an employee doesn't respond, they turn in their envelope and the question survey, they're blank. But 95% is a really good response, and certainly will, will give us, in addition to the interviews that we've been doing, a real good sense of what's on the mind of employees as well. And we've had a couple of meetings in the community. We met with McDonough 101 last week, and we had 10 or 11 people there, and that was pretty lively. We had an open forum also last week, and we had six people come. And I think one of the concerns I have is whether we've done enough with the community. And so when, I think when we get something more specific, we might do a presentation here or someplace else, that we will actually kind of give an overview of 10, 12, or 15 things, everything important, give the community an opportunity to respond to that. But that will be coming up in a, in a month or so. Probably early November, we'll give you the written draft report that'll probably be only a little over 80, 90 pages. So you'll have some reading to do, and we encourage you to read it, because we're not done with the draft report, with things in that that need to be, need to explain better, perhaps need to be fixed, because they're long. Again, we might have missed something. We could be taking you in a direction you think is dumb, and so we want to hear that too, because this is a process for us, and not for the Mercer Group only, to sort of drop something, run on town. This is a process for you, for us to enliven your imagination, so that we all, basically reach agreement, and then you and Fred from early sort of being, sort of carrying out our conversation. So if that makes sense, I want to cover some citywide issues, and I'm hoping to spend about 15 minutes here. And this, again, is just introducing you to this, so we don't need to have a deep discussion. I just want to make sure you know what's on our mind at this point. A lot of these I'm not even gonna say, but I'm gonna speak to ones that I think are important to you. The governance one, always it's important on how the city council works together, cohesiveness, particularly your individual work as champions of something, and I know Miss Nadi really had a passionate presentation to me about the park that you're so interested in, that you think is so important for the community. It was really inspiring to hear about that, too. So we could balance that, cohesiveness. There's been a lot of work, and not just on what does the CEO do, the mayor, and what's the CA do, the administrator, and how are their roles compatible, and if there's any sort of lost spots or tension that needs to be worked out, you know? Like there's work we've done internal on staff, and it's one of the things that we're most interested in, because when you read the charter, you can see how there could be confusion between what the mayor might do, what the administrator might do in their roles. And I'm not sure it's, it's clear, but the most important thing, that there's processes in place for communication, for working out things that need to be done, who's gonna take care of this, or that. And that primarily, a process that takes place between the mayor and the administrator. I like your retreats, and I got some of the minutes of the retreats. And one of the things that needs to come out of retreats is sort of action steps to keep carried out commitments. And I think there's been a little bit of slippage on that, and I want to talk to your retreat facilitator, who I know of, but I haven't really talked to him yet, but I will, to make sure that they are productive in the sense that something happens, that there's action out of that. And it really, the retreat ties into the second most strategic direction. One of the things that we push hard on our clients is having a clear sense of where you want to be in 20 or 30 years. If you don't have a clear sense, you're gonna end up someplace anyway, perhaps not the place that you want to be. And I may have told some of you about Marietta, where I live, where about '05, there was a committee or Blue Ribbon Commission that somehow discovered that our rental properties were 60 or 65 acres. were sixty or sixty-five percent of the units in the city, and that the owned property were forty or thirty-five percent. And all of a sudden, you explained all kinds of things, low participation in local elections, commitment to the school system, why my wife was teaching first grade, would have thirty or thirty-five kids through the year, when she's supposed to have twenty or twenty-four areas in which there were police issues, and why I can't. And so, then we got on. But it would have been pretty cool twenty or twenty-five years earlier, if the city had been aware of the importance of that, and said, we want to be here in twenty or twenty-five years. And then, through strategic planning and functional planning, like transportation plans and cop plans, and land use plan, that you actually have structures in place, and processes in place that carry you to that outcome. So you're close to it, or as we find over the years by succeeding exercises under the vision. So I liked what I saw in the strategic planning that Fred shared with me. You've got a lot of good things in place. Jim Mercer wrote a book on strategic planning twenty years ago, so we have a model of what we like to see, and you're doing well on that. But there's some things that can be enhanced. And the other thing is, you know, how do you involve citizens in both strategic and underplanning processes? Because we encourage that communities work out their future together, as opposed to it to a small group of people, even if that small group was elected through the city council. Service delivery structure is interesting, because there's a lot going on between you and the county, particularly in fire, parks and rec, dispatch, and other areas. And one of the questions that I'm having is, how do we balance this partnership with you controlling where you want to be in the future? And for example, the park out in Park, the county, for the largest extent, is the parks and recreation provider. You go, what do you do for parks, or big or small, or activities, big or small, that you particularly are interested in as a city? How do you get those funded? How do you get those in place? Do you do it through the county? Do you do it yourself? You really don't have an infrastructure in place here, like a parks director, you know, to carry that fold. So how does that work? Related to that is that, as you're growing, you have really done a good job of professionalizing some key support functions, like finance and human resource and information technology. But you don't have a purchasing agent, you don't have a fleet manager, you don't have a facilities manager, and so you're not quite there yet. So we would expect the city of this size to be professionalizing across the board. And you're partway there, and it's good, and what you've established in those three functions is terrific. But there's farther to go in that. Not to say that police department, for example, is doing a bad job of managing their fleet of vehicles, or fire is, but you're getting to a point where the asset masses at a level that you need to make sure that you have professional guidance over what's happening. Management organization, I talked on the first one, CEO, CAO. You had a deputy or assistant city manager for a while, and he went to Arizona. Is that a position that you need, particularly if you look at the potential for growth here? And it was pretty interesting on the, on the last presentation, something that was platted back in oh-five, but now something may be happening, sort of with some construction might be happening. You know, we've learned that the city could quickly become thirty thousand or forty thousand people, if the economy improves and development improves. And you've gotta be ready for that, in terms of city infrastructure. And so, positions like deputy city managers, and even department heads, the kind of people you have as department heads, and qualifications are pretty important to move you. You know, you've moved to one level, and you're partway there in catching up with your managerial and governance infrastructure, but we're gonna have another step, and you gotta keep up. You know, managing from behind is not, is not a great idea. You want to be anticipating a little bit of that vision and strategy process. How do we keep up with this? And as we turn it into general operations, and I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next page, is how do you keep up with the demand for services and the need for resources, particularly for people? Police would be the obvious place. That question would be, that's on the next page. So how do you manage those operations, so that you know they're doing a good job? You know what the department heads are telling you, what they're gonna do, and you get reports on what they're doing and how they're doing it. That's five A. And B is managing numbers, is in maintenance operations. And that is, if you have a department with twenty people, and they work sixteen hundred hours a year, less vacations, stuff, you know, it's thirty-two thousand hours. And if I was on a council, I would want to know how those thirty-two thousand hours were being applied to the good of the city. And you're, it's hard to get that information now. It really even applies in police, because that police has sort of, there's two sides of what they do. One is responding to calls, and the other is self-directed work. And in cases of smaller communities, it's usually a significant block of their time that's self-directed. So how do they use that time for the good of the community, and particularly for the good of preventing crime and heading things off? So that's all part of managing the numbers. Maintenance is the main thing, that you use it, but there's other places as well. Resource management, the budget process, I've been talking about how this one has sort of flowed, and what happened with the millage, and is the budget in balance? So we'll have some comments on budget process. The most important thing in budget process to me, since I was in that in the seventies at Fulton County, is the work that you do before staff even starts to think about the budget. And you've had this retreat, this pattern of retreats, and it's great. Out of that, a lot of come instructions to Fred's and low leaders and chiefs of the world, that says, look, you have to put a good budget together within this context. And then, as you go through the development of the budget, you have to check that that context is being developed in that context. And so, by the time you get to the end, there should be few surprises, if you've, if it's been clearly communicated from elected officials to the ones preparing the budget to, in detail.
From elected officials to staff?
Yes, ma'am. As a group. You might say, no tax increase, for example. You might say, we have, we have to invest in public safety. You might say, a lot of things, it's what you decide to say to them, and that is their job to bring you a budget that basically fits in that context, that you as a group has agreed to.
To make sure that we clearly get it communicated to our staff.
Absolutely.
You know, that it doesn't break down some way, and it feels to be communicated.
Yeah, yeah. First, you decide, and then, two, it has to be communicated, and then you have to get reports back, that they're, they're more within the context of what you communicate. So at the end, you get, when you get to a budget toward the end of the budget preparation period, there shouldn't be many surprises and frauds in there. And I know we had some issues this year.
Steve, I just have a really quick question, because I think our staff has done a great job of taking the items that we developed at the retreat, and putting them into action plans. I know you saw the minutes. I don't know if you saw, but they actually developed all the spreadsheets.
Yeah.
I think one of the challenges that I've had as an elected person is, when staff starts the process of implementing what we've said, then we end up changing things on the tail end. And it just kind of puts the whole planning process into flux.
Yeah.
And so, I guess moving forward, I would like for us to have some dialogue about that, because it's very challenging for staff.
Yeah, absolutely. Because they can be, well, frankly, kind of jerked around.
Right.
You know, if you really haven't decided, or you have a sort of a split on, let's take a simple one, the no tax increase, or tax increase, or whatever, and you keep coming back to that, you know, it's sort of like picking an open wound. And it makes it really hard for staff to come and meet your objectives, if you haven't, sort of, as a group, really.
The tax increase is a process, and then, there's a certain process that's required by state.
Yeah.
And certain steps.
Yeah.
And so, that's to be anticipated by any of our staff.
Yeah.
As well as by us.
Yeah.
Because those steps have to be followed. But for me, as a councilperson, it is very important that I understand, after we have communicated what we want, that we get more of whatever they feel is going to be a problem earlier on.
Yeah, early warning.
Uh-huh. So that there can be some adjustments to keep everybody from being frustrated at the end.
Yeah.
I think there could be some mid-steps.
Yeah.
Where, you know, if we're just all to meet, meet with department heads and our, and our manager, and lay it on the table, you know, where are we seeing some problems? Like, it seems like in the last few years, that every time we make public, well, every time we make police or fire a, you know, priority, we get to the end, and we're, and there's no money, or we can't do it, or it's down the road, or whatever. And so, I think those things need to be really hammered out, before we get all the way down here with the expectation that that was going to be carried out.
Yeah.
And, and we've run off with where it wasn't even included in the budget.
Yeah.
You know, and then it's, where is it? You know, we're sitting here, where is it? So I think there needs to be some interim discussions to help our staff from feeling frustrated over our decisions maybe at the end, because we feel somewhat frustrated if we don't realize that all of a sudden, what we've asked is just not gonna make the cut. You know, so if we could have some ideas in the beginning, maybe we could make some adjustments that would keep them less, you know, frustrated.
Yeah, I agree. There ought to be communication on elements of the budget, or your direction, that are proving difficult.
Right.
And let's read this. Are you sure this is what it's gonna cost? Are you sure you want to do, you know, five positions? Maybe we can do two. So that you go through this process on these key issues, sort of zeroing in on not just what you want, but what's practical.
What actually can actually happen.
Yeah, yeah.
What really is.
It's a good point. It's a good point. It's seldom that we come to a place where you have basically a brand-new finance department, or any kind of department, people leaving, and a whole bunch of people come in. And we've been watching the, in the several months we've been here, the evolution and growth of that group. And it's unusual, it's a difficult thing, to replace all that institutional member. But it's good that you professionalize, and that you have a CPA, and you have a finance director there, who could take this group and mold it, do a great job once they're ready to go. Facilities management, I talked about that one. Professionalizing, some kind of centralization, some help in space use, and I know I've been privy to some of the conversations of how the third floor should be set up, fleet management, the same thing. Under human resources, we have received comments in several ways, both from your HR director and from employees, about it looks like it's time for a salary study again. Police were saying they may, maybe behind the curve on the growth of salaries in other agencies. And that's the kind of study you ought to do over three to five years, or maybe more, if the situation on the ground is changing. Information technology, again, I like, you're professional in charge of that. In code is a good system, it's used in a lot of places. There's some capabilities that maybe you can take better advantage of. GIS is new and evolving, but at least you've got that started, and you have a fellow out in public works, who knows where he's gonna get that going. And then, materials management, it was a little bit surprising not to see somebody like a purchasing agent, you know, once you've gotten up into the twenty thousand-plus population line. So you're the sort of like the train that's moving along, and they're moving fast the last ten years. And so, catching up with your managerial and resource infrastructure is gonna be a thing coming through that. So that one citywide thing makes sense. Anything that you expected maybe to get to a list like this at this point, which you did, or you can email to me if you want. Okay? The final page, page three, is more department-oriented. And since, sort of covered finance and HR and IT on the prior page, if I didn't put anything down here. But community development, Inga Candy's been working with them. Codes and misunderstanding codes, and having deep knowledge of codes by the staff is really important, as well as infrastructure planning. You know, one of the, probably the first thing I noticed is that traffic doesn't move that one coming from the interstate over to the square. And then, once you get to the square, you've got a secondary problem with movement around the square. And we're learning through our interviews with police and fire, it's difficult for public safety vehicles to get around. One, because of obstacles like traffic or training, and two, because you've got a lot of really narrow streets, and they're gonna be set up, optimized, trafficked. So one of the strategic things is to look at how you've been over twenty years, improvement bit by bit, as you go along. Economic development, Inga's not saying any really strategy looking forward. I put a couple of examples, what kind of businesses do you want, do you want to locate here? You know, you gotta focus on retention of business or growing new businesses.
Or both.
Or, you know, some, some hybrid there like that. All the business licenses we know, at the same time, it's made staff, it's this huge local chunk thrown on them. A lot of places will have it throughout the year, you know, based on when they first got their business license, or some other kind of, kind of date. And doing more on the web, particularly with business licenses. And that's a question I also have from Marietta, it doesn't look like after we apply for mine online, I don't know why not, because we're like sixty, seven thousand, so why, why can't I do that yet? Fire is an interesting department, because in allocating roles between the county and the city, hasn't necessarily kept the geographic boundaries. And so, the station out goes into the county, and the county goes into here, and then you've got this area between downtown and the west side and the interstate. What are you gonna do about that? You have a station three. And it sort of gets back to the larger question, what do you want the fire department to do? Because right now, if you have a fire, that fire is gonna be directed by Henry County, because, mainly because of leadership issue, but also because of the volume of resources that they're required to fire. Is that what you want? Is that an okay way to do it? You may, you may think not. I'm not asking for an answer now, I'm asking you to think about that question.
Well, and the railroad does serve as a service boundary.
It absolutely does, yeah.
And, and it serves as a service boundary, because when a train is passing, we wanted to ensure that there would be fire service available and somebody not caught.
Yeah.
You know, because there's a train.
Yeah.
And as we grow, both sides of the railroad track, whether it be in Dougherty County, have to have, you know, adequate fire coverage.
Right.
You can't just say it's got adequate because you have X number of places and X number of firemen. You have to look at that train as always a strategic barrier.
Yeah.
You know, in the case of human fire. And so, but we as a city have always wanted to maintain ourselves as a full-service city.
Yeah.
And we do, and I'm sure you found that we do answer tremendous number of calls for the county.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, it was, the most interesting thing about the visit to the outline station fifty-two or thirty-two, yeah, is that their service area, I think, is more county than it is, than it is city.
And our, and our police tend to overlap, you know?
Yeah.
When there are things going on, John Smolwoski's a good example of that, so.
So that question of, what do you expect for your fire department would determine how much the county might do and how much you might do, and it's a service delivery question, it's not for us to answer, for us to pose, and for you to answer. In the leadership of it, and there's no criticism of the chief or the captain, but what's set up now is administrative chief, who has a significant focus on codes and life safety, and then a captain. And so, in a command sense, if you, if you had a fire, the battalion chief of the county is gonna trump the captain probably every single time. So should that captain, assistant chief, should be the chief of operations or something like that, where in an incident, he'd be a person that might naturally take command of a fire happening within the city limits of McDonough. within the city limits of McDonough. Uh, looking to the future, keeping up with population growth and development. Station fifty-three, where's that gonna be, uh, and being ready for that? And one of the things that you asked in the RFP was for cost reductions. But because of the population and development trends, you're gonna have to be ready for investment. And, 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 as well, and this is probably the most tangible example of that. Uh, traffic systems that I mentioned. Police, uh, increasing staffing levels again to keep open throw. Uh, moving to a more robust, uh, police management system, and that's, that's being worked on. And now the obstacles and, uh, my, my colleague, uh, John went down to the miss report, did the interviews down there and the site visits. And, uh, I mean, he, he's worried about that place, and I think you are too, it's reflected in the budget.
Yeah.
And getting that moving quickly. The, the things that worry me is the security of records, uh, what if there's a fire? I think you, you have those same concerns.
And safety for the people that are there.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll back up and say something generally. Um, Public Horse is a nice facility, the old one they're using in some ways. You know, should they only be in one place? There's land in the back that you have accessible at the, at the new facility. So how should that, the new yard really shape out over time, altogether? Related to that is that you've had two pretty independent groups. You've got the street group and then the water and sewer alliance group. And is there work that they can do together? They seem to be incredibly independent in what they do. The streets goes this way, and the water and sewer guys go that way. And again, the sense of managing the numbers, particularly if there's workload spikes, uh, between the two, is there something that they can do cross?
To help each other.
Crosswalk, you know, across. But, uh, and managing the numbers, I said, and I like what I saw at the beginning of both the GIS and the engineering group, uh, out there as well. Going back to these in general, I think one of the things that's been most heartening to, to Inga and John Maxwell and myself is the level of professionalism in these departments. And I don't always, just being the department head, but when we go down to supervisors and when we go down to employees and we talk, one of the things that I like to see is when I talk to employees that they have as much of a heart for the citizens of the community as you have. And I'm seeing that here. And it's just really, it's really encouraging to me, because a lot of places I go, uh, even if they're of this size, the employees don't necessarily got the heart for the citizens and the infrastructure, you know, that the elected vision the citizens do. So, it's a really good sign to you, I think, that you're on the right.
Why you found it.
That you're on the right track.
If you remember, I said that you would find I employees have that heart.
Yeah, yeah, so it's good. And I know you have a, was it McDonough Heart thing that the mayor has, and I think, you know, I'm sort of seeing an action through that. So, that's all I wanted to say today. We, we need to write things up. We're gonna start coming back to departments or follow-up interviews with the, with the tops and in more detail, and questions that we have. And there's always last-minute data and information to collect and check. But everyone has been very cooperative. Uh, the department has opened their arms fundamentally to us as consultants, which is really important. And, uh, you know, I, I think in terms of our process, we feel good that we're, we're going in a constructive direction, and everyone's been working together with us, with us all take that direction. So, I don't know if you have any other questions at this point? If, you know, the purpose again was mainly to give you a briefing of the things that we're looking at. Yes, ma'am?
Sounds like good job, good job you done. You did touch upon a couple things, you know, like leadership, you know, responsibility.
Yeah.
And you also touched on recreation, parks and recreation.
Yes.
Uh, this question, I know we look, you know, further that road, playing that road. Would you per se, uh, have some, we, uh, park or recreation?
You know, it really depends on what you wanna do. There's, there's a significant interest in the council member interviews in youth.
Yes.
In the community. And so, you know, you, you connect to youth through schools and through the recreation side of parks. And through social services.
And we have some of you count that really work with the board that station.
Yeah, and so, as you get larger, the question is, do you need to embed some leadership for those initiatives within city government? So you have a person, you know, that, that, that the mayor or the administrator can get on the phone and say, you know, what's happening with the summer program, uh, Bob for salad? Rather than maybe not have such clarity on who's supposed to make that happen in a great way. So, it's a good, it's a good question, it's a question that we'll raise. Because you, you have this relationship already with the county. And what happens sometimes is counties do larger parks and larger programs, like the countywide soccer. But then the cities have subordinate programs that, that really zero in on what's important to you and what parks are important to you, and other smaller parks, pocket parks and things that are of great importance here.
Park, usually pocket parks and po-, um, and, um, parks that are more or less for walking and, and trail type things.
Yeah.
Those usually fall in a subcategory to the cities, where the larger pictures fall in.
Yeah, or just taking advantage of the fortunate assets, like your parks, which you're so interested in just it sitting over there. Or something that's unique to the character of the city. You have a square. So that's something you really need to, to publish. And, you know, I've lived for thirty years in a place where the score is, that was run down and not do good announcements, and I know yours can want this in your career, so. Again, if you got a question, you can call me, you can write an email, uh, and we'll come back and talk some more. You like me, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, thank you. This, this is a great, great process of really, uh, the field of information. So I'm very appreciative of, of what your agency has done for us. I didn't hear anywhere in your presentation that we have an overabundance of employees. What I did hear was that there are some opportunities, um, and, and in fact, some needs that are currently in place where we could actually stand to acquire additional professional staff. I think one of the areas that I was most attuned to were, um, the projections that you mentioned relative to, uh, being able to apply a cost per population. And that's one of the things that a budget analyst does. And I know that, you know, we've kind of had various philosophical discussions amongst ourselves about the need. But I'm, I'm hearing very clearly.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna make close statements when we're writing them. Which of those positions you, types of positions you may need right now? And which are ones that might come down the road, you know, in a couple of years, or a year or something like that? But I think your, your general comment, that, that I agree with you. This is a place where you won't be cutting or maintaining. But over time, particularly depending on the path, on, on the path of growth and development, you know, you're gonna be enhancing and adding in particular professional ones.
Steve, do you, do you think we're safe in, in, in moving forward with filling some of the positions that are, you know, we're having somewhat of a, a mass exodus from the city right now? And I think we're, we're hemorrhaging to some extent. And, you know, there's been the concern that we need to wait before we hire anybody on the findings from this study. And that's causing such a strain on our employees and causing them to suffer. And I just wonder, uh, those key positions that the administrator has indicated that need to be filled, do you see any danger in, in doing that?
But what, what I would do is, is this. I would, uh, I would ask the mayor and my brother to just communicate to me what positions they might wanna go for tomorrow. And then Inga and I will talk about it. And before we write out this report, we will say we agree, well, I think you can wait tomorrow.
That's fair.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Other thoughts?
Any other thoughts?
Thank you.
Steve, I, I thought your presentation was, it was just a great presentation. Thank you so much. A lot, a lot of energy was expended here. And tell Inga and, uh, and John, I much appreciate the input you have, and Steve is very welcome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you. And feel free to hang out with us for the rest of the week.
No, I'm fine too, because you have interesting things coming up. I wouldn't ask for a while.
All right, all right. Oh, there you go. Uh, at number nine, let's talk about Bullshire Race Track. And you've got a, Mr. Frampton here?
Yes, we have Frampton.
Well, 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 thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, uh, contemplating such a date with, uh, this concept plan that you people have come up with. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it yet.
That's Alan Kribski.
What?
Alan Kribski is with Eton Bank.
Okay, thank you. I, I apologize, I just didn't see you.
Thank you. So, um, I can reintroduce me, I'm a, who, who don't from the Eton Bank engineers. Alan Kribski here also, Eton Bank. So we're here today to present, uh, phase one improvements to Phillips Drive Road. And phase one involves improving Phillips Drive from State Road twenty approximately to Old Griffin Road. Um, Phillips Drive is a suburban local street that serves as a connector from State Road twenty to, uh, destinations, uh, east of the city of McDonough and vice versa. So, you know, I heard the previous gentleman talking about congestion downtown. That's, that's a project that will aid in, in eliminating some of the congestion that you're experiencing downtown. Uh, phase one, um, the purpose of phase one is, one, to improve drainage, uh, two, uh, improve pedestrian facilities, and, and three, improve the actual roadway, uh, with a new pavement and some minor bike. Uh, we've done concept studies, um, on this phase. And we are actually in the process of, uh, preliminary design. Uh, the typical section, uh, for that project consists of two eleven-foot travel lanes and five of sidewalks on either side of, uh, um, the, the roadway. Okay, so the typical section continues. We get to, uh, Aldis Smith Drive and, uh, Washington Street, which now at the existing condition, these two roads are at an offset, which is not ideal for connectivity and safety. So we propose, um, realigning these two so that they can tie together. The majority of the sidewalk, by the way, on, on, on this project would be constructed, the proposed sidewalk on either side would be constructed within the existing right of way. However, minor slivers of right of way would be, are required for that purpose. The cotton-filled slopes are not too bad because that area is relatively flat. Um, the cotton-filled slopes are proposed to be constructed within exist, um, temporary expense. Uh, so, um, we continue here. And then this phase one ends just west of Old Griffin Road, tied to a new terminus that has recently been constructed, a right terminus from Phillips Drive to Old Griffin Road. So this is phase one. And like I said, we've done concept studies on that phase. And we are presently involved in actively doing preliminary design on, on this roadway to meet the needs of the city.
Do you, do you have an estimate of, from twenty old to Old Griffin?
Excuse me?
An estimate of cost of construction?
Cost of construction for this section is roughly, roughly six hundred thousand is what we will estimate. And I have, and I, we have.
I believe in, in the page behind your agenda summary is a breakdown of that between what would be paid for as floss and what would be paid for as stormwater. But because some of these are stormwater improvements, so we decided to put the cost that way. You can see the breakthrough.
Excellent. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Um, by the way, there's a detail, and I understand, uh, I have two extra copies here, detail of all these studies that were done, many cost calculations, different scenarios and so forth. If anybody has. Okay, so, phase two, uh, we will challenge with looking at realigning Phillips Drive to properly tie into Race Track Road. Because now it's really undesirable what exists up there now. And to give you an idea as to the need of this improvement, um, presently there's a level of service, existing level of service C on, at this intersection. This, this has to do with the amount of delay that we're experiencing. Level of service though is considered to be acceptable.
It's like, it's like getting a C on a test. They, they go from A is really awesome, B, C, and then you get down to F. So we're at a C right now.
But however, if nothing is done, uh, by the year twenty twenty-one, it's expected that this intersection will perform at a level of service of F. So it would fail. So what you have translated is six to seven years max before you absolutely have to do something to solve the problem. And from listening to the previous gentleman, um, it sounds like you have a problem now downtown. And, you know, it may not be this study that was done, the traffic study that was done was a local traffic study. But you don't really understand what impact this improvement would have on the downtown city of McDonough. You would have to do more of a global study to understand that. So we studied several alternates and, and discussed with the city staff what the needs of the city were. And consequent to these discussions, we are recommending this alternate here, which shows a roundabout, but this, like, what we're really showing here, if you think about it, is really alignment, a new alignment to tie Phillips Drive with Race Track Road. And an alignment for Old Griffin Road that minimizes impacts to property. So the city made it clear to us that their concern, their main concern was reducing and avoiding impacts to properties. And in order to achieve all the, the, the geometric goal, this is the solution or the alternate that resulted in the least property impacts. The red dots here show, uh, complete takes, two of them are residential relocations. And one, the one in the corner there with, uh, Phillips Drive and Old Griffin is a vacant problem. So that would be what that is. Now, the other thing is, this is showing a roundabout which accommodates large trucks. So we also understood from the city that, uh, there's a lot of large trucks with fifty-three foot trailers that utilize this road. This roundabout would accommodate that.
And school buses.
Well, yes, but school buses, no problem.
Yeah. I was about to say, not only are they having trucks because of the, um, industrial that's located at the beginning of the race track there, right across the railroad track, but also you have the, um, you have the school system. And having this roundabout and pulling out Folks Drive will once again impact, um, Hampton with heavier truck traffic. And it's really not, uh, improved, um, as much as it, uh, it's going to have to be to be able to utilize truck traffic. So it's, um, it's just, the improvements just aren't there. And forty-two highway, as you know, with all the commercial that we've had. Um, down to forty-two highway and off of one fifty-five, you have the same heavy type of traffic that neither one fifty-five nor forty-two is capable of truly handling. And so, and we have intersections like one fifty-five and forty-two, um, that really need some help and some improvement with those. but by the people who are coming off of the expressway trying to get out Race Track Road to eighty-one, all of the residents. And since it appears that the layout map is set up for the city, that most of our growth, residential growth will occur to the east side. All of these points become very key, and especially the one you have up there. This becomes very key to a lot of people who want to get exit and come off onto Phillips Drive to Race Track directly to eighty-one.
Right, bypass the C.
Right. And that's going to be the first bypass because the city has not been able to connect McDonald Parkway yet to the 155 with the overhead bridge, which will come, become far more usable once that's done, and the best route for anyone trying to get through traffic because you aren't waiting on a train. So if that segment of McDonald Parkway happens, it will alleviate some of the pressure here, but it will increase the pressure at 155 and Forty-two. And I mean, it's, and it's doing just like this, it's breathing. And, and we had, the city manager and I have had discussions ever since he's been here about these really, you know, hot points in the city where all growth continues to happen, but these intersections considered to sit without truly being addressed.
Hi, Ms. Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Frampton, I have three quick questions. Number one, I wasn't clear if on the Phillips Drive route and the sidewalks were on both sides or either... So they are on both sides?
They're on both sides. This is the typical section here, so you can see.
That's what we needed. Awesome. Question two, and this has to do with Holly Smith and Washington Road.
Right.
The realignment there, what, one of the conversations that we've repeatedly had here is the whole discussion about making it user-friendly for kids who are going to school. So if, if that could be taken into consideration, I don't know if it's a crosswalk or a tra... I don't know what...
With the alignment of those two roads, we create an intersection. And at that point, if we need to at some point in the future, put up a stop sign or pedestrian, something like a light like we have going up, I think that's part of the L S I at Forty-two near El Salvador.
I think that should be...
Need to have that now.
Right, exactly, exactly. It needs to be identified because the school system, you know, and it's a large facility and it, and as long as it's there. Or that traffic is generated, whatever that building may or may not be, future-wise, then it still needs something, needs to be addressed now.
Then, Lee, do we need to have the council vote to authorize Mr. Frampton to add that into the design, to the scope?
Is that an operation of the...
That would be, that's not in the current scope that they have.
We can talk about three ideas, though, which one are we...
We're talking about the crosswalk.
I know, but somebody said flash and white.
They all come back with the proposed... With what we can really live with. And there are, there are cities that when you have this type of intersection, they have a light that works during the course of the school, when it begins and when it ends, there's a certain amount of time frame that the light works during that time.
Are you, are you clear?
Yes, I am. That is part of their schedule.
Yes, this is part of our scope. The part that's not scoped is realigning Phillips Drive with Race Track. So the part that's, this, this entire, let me zoom out here. This entire section is done, we've already been contracted for this, which will include the realignment of all schemes.
Yes, sir, my third question has to do with Old Griffin Road. And on the roundabout, we see a new road that aligns, if we can go to the roundabout.
To the roundabout?
Yes. We see a new road that aligns with Race Track. From the rendering, I'm not clear if Old Griffin Road continues to be a surface road or what, what happens with what is currently Old Griffin Road.
That new alignment that curves around like this and comes back is Old Griffin Road. And the reason we had to do that was to, first of all, in, in a nutshell, reduce property impacts. So...
Yes.
Yes, this portion of Old Griffin Road will be obliterated.
Mm-hmm. Boundarily.
And as all those homes, what, which portion?
Between the two.
Between Race Track Road... Those two homes would have to have new driveways.
So it doesn't impact any of the businesses on Old Griffin Road, only those two properties? Okay, so in, in some regard, that becomes a no man's land. So what happens to that, that land after...
Well, that, that would be up to the city.
If the asphalt coming up, what's happening?
Probably the asphalt would come up. That's standard and typical. Like we saw with the other end of Phillips Drive, they, the county abandoned the other section. They pulled the grass up, or the asphalt up. They tilted the earth until it was seeded and strawed, and now it's just grass.
And, and your right-of-way department might choose to negotiate with the property owners.
Fight up. Yeah, I did it too.
That's where I'm hearing that the property owners are aware and protected and it doesn't have any...
They would have a driveway then off the intersection.
For example, this one property, this one commercial business here we park in here could get additional parking here. So there's, there's benefits, so you can use that, you know. So that's in conclusion, I mean, that's pretty much, there's a whole lot of alternates that we studied and so forth, if there's any questions, it comes down to this.
Been a long time in Canada.
This is the cleanest, the easiest way. It does require the purchase of two people's homes, and this means yard, this is the third piece.
They've been trying to sell some of those kinds of city, and I'm sure they, another one is a good friend. Was over the wings, and one of the lovely ladies.
I noticed three A actually lines up, the alternate three A.
Yes.
There's a reason for not choosing it, is it impacts more home?
That's right. If we kept Old Griffin, this current, not the current alignment, you would lose that business.
Is that, oh yeah, that's good.
Right, so...
That's good.
But choosing a one you choose, you're going to have an issue there with the short distance of that street because that road is very narrow. And if you throw more big trucks in it, that short distance...
Well, the, the thought is that you, you designed the project to accommodate the big truck, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to allow them to go and use it right away. You might restrict the trucks. So, but in the future, you want to be able to have that project accommodate large trucks. So when you improve elsewhere, the project doesn't have to go be, you know, modified or...
Right, you can, to start out an F and bring it up to a C, we want to start out an F and go ahead and make it a P, and then slowly improve the other intersections and the road projects around the area. It could be done with this one.
So, so for example, look at one of these alternates. Major impacts, so that was ruled out. And the, the city was also concerned about traffic impacting them from the trees. So they haven't had adequate storage. So we feel really good about the solution after meeting with the city. I mean, it really helped us to zoom in and reach a correct solution.
It's this wing, and then, I think it is Mrs. Frampton.
It's not, it's not, it's not else. This is Ponder, Ponder property.
It's Ponder. Ponder and Wayne's.
But here it shows it, this, this home right here.
That's Ponder too.
It's, it's, hold on, hold on. Okay.
That's Ponder too.
It's, it's, hold on, hold on. This, this is Mrs. Wayne's house, and this is her yard, where we took a small piece of property to add that new terminus. And this is her neighbor on Phillips Drive. I'm not sure who that is.
Here they are.
It is Mrs. Frampton's house.
That's the home.
That is one that's been given out. The red dots are the ones that are out?
If we were to... This is not the final term, but it's in the same approximately as the house. There it is.
Look at those properties that are coming here.
Yes.
That's the Brooklyn alternative. And if you notice that leg of Old Griffin, we deliberately started with this, this, this house here. This house has saved this home, and just take a slipper from the back of this property. There's no house.
It should be option.
Alright. Everybody?
So, that was just informational.
Good information, great information.
But do we want to move forward with the design of this concept? Or do we want to hold off on that? I guess that would be the direction requested from the council.
And my question is, I'm sorry, I'm going to... At what point is there citizen involvement? Have we already talked to the homeowner?
We have not. This is the first step. We finalized the concepts, and we bring the team first before we went to the citizens.
Okay, and I think that drives our next step because we really need to know what their thoughts and feelings are relative to this design.
Alright, so that's the direction.
I have a correction on your, you asked, to be here on the cost of Phase One. Including the six hundred that I quoted was not always updrafted. So they stopped one, you know, dollars for each stormwater. But the total cost of Phase One is one point two including right wing.
One what?
One point two.
Well, hell, when we did Mr. Paul, we, we looked at it in March of two thousand and six, and it's pretty much arbitrary, we counted, we counted ten, we came up one point five. So man, I, you headed in the right direction.
But if you, if you add this realignment here...
None of that one's going to be...
Right, so now the total, including this, would be about two point two.
Oh, okay.
Two point two.
Yes, that's a good...
My properties, everything.
So, so...
And we gave it some, yeah, conservative estimates.
So I have one last question, Emily and city administrator. I'm, I'm sorry, I just have one last question. With making these improvements, street lights is a big part of that. So is this a part of the budget?
Yes, we have a budget, I think it was sixty thousand we put in there just for lights.
I would, I would just make this recommend...
But roundabout.
That's for the roundabout.
But roundabout.
That's just for the...
Were you talking about along Phillips Drive? I misunderstood, I'm sorry. No, we did not accommodate.
I would think that as an, as an overlay to this plan, that we will start conversations on street lighting, and, and given that this is a historic area, that we might look at doing what is not, that's, we would look at taking it a level up from being just utilitarian and looking at some type of decorative street lighting for that area.
Forty-two, just north of the square, as the one-way pairs come back together, there's very decorative lighting that matches the square. We could look at matching that.
Alright, alright folks. Thank you, very good presentation again. Yes, it's you, Fred.
Public meetings, are we, do we have any, are we doing, how do we public meetings? Because I don't know if they heard, I don't know if they heard, I've heard it. I want to make sure that they understand the argument before we start construction.
Yeah, alright, we, we, we'll make sure that you have an opportunity, alright. That was very good, folks, very good presentation, very good presentation. Okay, Ms. Knight, Ms. Knight, out of number ten, the city leave parking lot. Ms. Knight is going to share that information with this guy, thank you.
I don't know.
I'm breaking, breaking down here. I've got one that's loose that I need to put over there. And then, I don't want y'all to hang me now on figures because my figures may be off, everybody, when I give you this shoot. So please bear with me, please. I'll be happy to be corrected. I just did it based on my poor ability where this is concerned. I want you to put, I have a list for you. I want you to put out, we'll talk about it during the order here, okay? Did y'all get some, everybody got one of these? Did y'all get them? Did you get one? Um, wait.
I did.
You did?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we have discussed for a very long time the overall cost of, of our parking. And I went to Mr. Ford, who has the Carpet Place, F and F Carpet? Is it F and F? Yes, Carpet. And at the corner of Sloan and, and Griffin Street. And they were willing to donate their parking area, which is the first plat that you see there. They were willing to donate the use of that property to the city. They are willing to donate it for Monday through Friday from five thirty in the afternoon until seven thirty the next morning. And every Saturday and Sunday, all day long, twenty-four hours. And then on, and on all holidays, it will be available twenty-four hours. And they're willing to do, to donate this to the city and as a donation that we would then sign off on, that they will then utilize for tax purposes. And they have worked out what they feel is a proper donation for that based on, their accountant said it needs to be based on the other properties that we have had, you know, in the past, that need to be... The other properties in the past that we have, you know, paid for. There are fourteen, there are fourteen spaces, and if you will look on the back of your paper there. And the Truman, if we have these fourteen spaces and the Truman property was done, we would have a total of thirty-one spaces that would be absolutely free, used to the city if we proceeded with the Truman property as it was, as we purchased it. We purchased it for the purpose of creating parking spaces. So that would give us spaces. I would like for you to look, if you will, at the parking for the Rena property, I'm, I'm sorry, for the Hampton property. And you have a, if you will, you can put that up. The Hampton property is there, it keeps very, and if you will look on your sheet, the Hampton property has eighteen plus or minus spaces. A lot of people cheat and park against the, another business there, but there's eighteen spaces in that area. And we have rented it since November of two thousand and four, based on the information that I was able to get. And you can see what we have expended to date. We will have expended to date through November of this year, which would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. You can see that we were paying twelve hundred dollars a month, per month, and that we were also paying the taxes that were on this. I would like to offer to the, to the Hampton family, as well as to the Rena family, the same opportunity... I would like to offer to the, to, um, the Hampton family as well as to the Rainer family, the same opportunity to donate this property for our use. And allow a tax write-off for their purposes. And if you will look at the, um, Rainer property, the Rainer property had twenty-eight plus or minus spaces, and we began in September of two thousand and six. And so over the last eight years, as you can see, it increased, um, each year by a hundred dollars, and we've, um, spent a hundred, um. Let's see, we've spent, um, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, um, for that property. So, if you, if, um, the Reiners or the, um, Hantons have the need for a donation, a tax donation. Um, those properties could continue to be utilized, but whether or not they do, we do have a property donated for our use. As well as if we use the Truman pro- property for what we, um, purchased this property for, um, we would have thirty-one free, free spaces. And if you will also see, um, that the amount of money, I don't know if it's on y'all's or not, maybe, um, does it show at the top? Yes, at the top of the page, you'll see the revenue for July on, um, just on the Hampton property was five hundred and eighteen dollars. And at some months a lower, some a higher, and so I did a, basically, a yearly average. For the Hampton property, we received two, uh, six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in actual revenue, you know, from those, uh, from those, um, those parking meters. So, um, the savings from that would allow for the removal of the, of the house on the Truman property. Plus, it would, um, um, if we could, if they would consider donating that property to us, we would have, uh, that yearly revenue coming in. So, I, I think it would be a win-win situation if the families or the owners of those two properties would consider a donation, as have the Ford family considered, you know, they are willing to make the donation. And it would, regardless of what we end up doing, the Ford donation of their property requires very little from us, and I will go over that with Lee and, and Mr. Ford. But, uh, mainly, it's just a few signs that need to be put in, they put in new gravel recently, but it does.
Kind of gravel parking lot.
Yes. But so is the, so are other areas.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I was having a picture.
It is, but, um, it does, it will allow for, I think, really to help support, especially the restaurants and the businesses that need more and more parking in that area. So, um, and it will certainly help on weekends and during holidays, yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And festivals, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, go ahead, yes, ma'am.
Um, Jim, I'm sorry, I can't readily identify, but for the Ford property, that would render how many spaces?
Fourteen.
Fourteen spaces, okay. One of the concerns that I have relative to the Truman House is subsequent to our decision to purchase that property for parking. We actually had a, a downtown charrette process through the LCI, where a number of citizens indicated that they were not interested in demolishing that building. And so, because of its historical significance, and so one of the concerns that I have with, uh. I don't want to say with, with the proposal, but it seems as though the removal of the Truman House is an intricate part of what you're recommending on today.
Well, it's not an intricate part, we can have the donation of the Ford property regardless of what we do with the others. But it does allow, and a Ford property that we made a very large investment in, for the purpose of which we have had LCI's, LCI's and other studies done that says that it is very important that we have proper parking along Tarpley to support the east side of the square in that particular location. And that's why we purchased the property and why we have discussed it at numerous retreats, that, um, that along with a, um, development feasibility, a development agreement with the other property owners should be pushed forward. Um, so that we can take care of that property between Tarpley and Low Street there. But in all of our studies, it has been an intricate part of that having parking there feeds the east side of the square, immediate east side of the square. Both, um, the Chafin building area and as you go down Griffin, you know, Griffin Street, so, uh, and Hampton Street. So, I, you know, like I said, regardless of what we do with the others, we have fourteen spaces that now are free for us. And, um, continuing to put out the kind of money that we have put out for years, um, I think is something that is going to have to be faced by this council once and all. I know we have stepped over it a number of years.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and Mayor, my, my recommendation would be that we make inquiry with the owners of those two parking lots to see if they are in fact interested in selling them to the city so that we don't continue to lease them in the manner that we have in the past. And I think in terms of, um.
Not just the donation as opposed to the purpose.
I mean, do- do- donation is fine if they're willing.
And not the donating of property, donating of the use of that property.
If they are willing to do that, that, that's fine, but my, the, the point that I'm wanting to make is this. That the Truman House needs to be a separate discussion from the parking issue. And not combined with whether or not these individuals are going to accept the donation or, um.
Well, it continues to be, uh, the same discussion, and the same discussion is this. Unless there is parking other than where the Truman House is, on Tarpley Street, to support the, the, uh, east side of the square. We have not accomplished anything, and that's why we purchased that property and certainly why I voted to pay the sum of money we did for that piece of property at the time. And there's nobody sitting at this table that has been a bigger champion of saving historic sites than me.
And again, with that being my district, and I appreciate the fact that you are the at-large councilperson, I would again say, out of respect for the citizens who very adamantly expressed that they have an interest in having that house restored in some capacity, that we need to at least revisit that conversation.
And that's fine.
In the same manner that we.
But the decision needs to be made.
In the same, just one more.
Yes, ma'am.
In the same manner that we are currently revisiting the historic decision on the construction of the one-way pairs. We need to also engage the community and those individuals downtown as to what their feelings are relative to the demolition and removal and conversion of that property into a parking lot.
And it's not only their feelings, it is taking into account feasibilities and multiple studies that have shown how drastically we need that for economic survival of the east side of the square.
I think the last time that I recall the study on parking, it was prior to the construction of the parking deck that we currently have on the square.
Right, maybe we need a new one then.
That's possible.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it doesn't help that some.
Calm me.
I, I had a quick comment.
Go, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Honestly, it's quick. Um, the Ford family, that's a great, great spot, I'm all for that. Back to the Truman House, we have got to have a plan for that property. It is a black hole, it's a, it's a blackout to our city right now because that's the main thoroughfare. If anyone else owned it, we would be having code violation after violation on that structure. Um, I, I'm of the opinion that it should be a parking lot, but that's just one person's opinion. Historic and old are two different things. Uh, just calling it old doesn't make it historic. I don't know the whole history of the house, so I might be ignorant on that.
What's your definition of historic?
Yeah, that's, that's, everybody's different, I guess.
No, I'm asking. Something that's.
Well, that's not necessarily historic. Um, to me, the Hazelhurst is a historic house because of its history of, of soldiers and, and, and what, you know, what had taken place there. Uh, there's a lot of old structures that aren't necessarily historic, but again, that's my opinion. Um, but we've got to have a plan, that's my only point. We've, we've been hauling around it for too long, dear.
We've had several discussions, decisions, and we never do anything.
We never make a decision.
We just keep pushing it around, and we need to make a decision on it, one way or the other, Peter.
I'm with him.
And I feel like it should be a parking lot.
We've had some, uh, estimated costs, uh, Fred, I think it was twenty-eight thousand at some point in time, you know, we're going to do it in-house. I don't even know where that stands.
Uh, the house can be taken down in the neighborhood of seven thousand dollars.
Well, anyway, I, uh, are you going to proceed with, uh, with the discussion, Gail, of these other two pieces?
If, um, if the council, um, so agrees, I will be, I certainly will be happy to talk with the Hampton family and the Rainer family about whether or not they, uh, would benefit from the possibility of a tax donation.
You better have an objection.
I don't, but.
Go ahead.
Going back to the house, going back to the, the, uh, the Truman House in terms of next steps, I mean, uh, Mr. City Administrator, can you come back to us and make some proposals on, um, at least a conversation with the community to find out where folks are at, at this juncture? I mean, I agree, we actually allocated thirty-five thousand dollars to, to fix the exterior of the property. And, and, and that didn't take place because there were folks who said we need to tear it down, so.
That was thirty-five thousand dollars that was set aside to do, to do a, uh, to do a development overlay for that house as well as the other properties. And that was on two different, two different retreats.
Okay.
That money was set aside for that purpose, not directly for the house.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you, Fred, thank you, Gail, Ms. Vincent, others.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, we, we, we're going to move on down without the council members going to have to leave here momentarily. Uh, folks, uh.
Well, thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you, what you've brought to our attention. Uh, you know, back in, in June, July, or obviously, I want to reaffirm the great work that, uh, our administrator and staff did relative to, uh, the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget. I did have a few reservations, I did vote against it. Having said that, it had nothing to do with the wonderful work that they had done. However, I had one of our, uh, meetings, workshops, uh, I, you always think it, I've always ruled a thumb, a thumb of five percent, so I made a statement, you know, that, uh, that I felt like, and it's purely arbitrary, and I made it, made it very clear that, you know, I reached up here and got a figure, so. And rightfully so, some of the council members questioned me about it, and they should have. Uh, I did have some things in mind, uh, to, uh, along those lines, however, some things changed. And then I came back and I, at another meeting, it may have been at August, I'm not sure about today, so, and I said, you know, uh, I'd like to sit down and go line to line, uh, in, in the budget, just to get a real feel, it's been such a long time since I've done that, and I said, they did a marvelous job. So I did that and invited anybody who would participate, and Roger Poot, he came and joined us, and, uh, and Elrod, and I guess I've had that done probably about four weeks. We met usually twice a week, and, uh, I have put together, uh, a, a package here that, uh, momentarily I will share with each and every one of you, showing, uh, some adjustments, so purely estimates. Uh, I will not, and, and cannot answer any questions tonight, all my papers are downstairs. However, I want to give you a chance to look at those figures, the questions that you have, and obviously you'll have some, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. And on November the twentieth, I mean, October the twentieth, uh, we have talked about that court bill. And, uh, somewhat creative, I guess, along those lines, uh, that we put together a figure, and I have that figure, which is considerably less than, than what we had proposed at that time, and probably rightly so. So I've asked Bill Kemp, ladies and gentlemen, to come on the twentieth, to reaffirm his, uh, proposal relative to financing the court bill in effect of one, one fifteen. Uh, however, as Fred and I talked this morning, and, uh, and, and he had mentioned indeed rightly so, I've never seen us build anything since I've been at City Hall within a, in a estimated figure. The only thing that I ever recall was two years ago, we had a volunteer project manager that built four tennis courts, and he came in fifteen hundred dollars under the proposed budget. Uh, everything I've ever seen, you just might as well add a figure to it. But I'm using a figure of four million and twenty-four thousand, three eighty-six, uh, with, uh, a transfer of some funds that you'll see in my notes, uh, for a, a, a figure for six months beginning January one. I would take, I hope you would take a look at all of these things, you may, obviously going to have some concerns, I welcome you to City Hall, uh, to look at that, and with that, I've asked Roger if he would, don't, don't criticize me in the folder that you get. I had to find some folders, I think one of them was Lester's folder too, and she came up, I had a plan laid out for myself, and Lester said, Billy, why don't we do it like this? And she was so right about it, so Roger, would you share that with them, and, and, uh, some of you, like Lee and Fred and I, will get something like this, a little leader, and, and you'll just, uh, see this information, and then we'll consider this and maybe vote on it if you so deem it's important, in, uh, sometime in November. If you gather everybody, give everybody one of the, it's kind of a unique binder. We, we, we trying to save a few bucks along the way, so I apologize for that, ladies and gentlemen. But, uh, but anyway, I just wanted, uh, wanted you to have that, and give Lee one, and give Fred one, and Ms. Vincent, and Janice, I've given you one. And for, for those that have visited here for us on Monday this week, I hope to get on the website, you know, the recap of this, where all our people can, can be aware of that, uh, of those proposed figures. They're not in stone, folks, they're not in stone, but these are recommendations, and what we ended up doing, it's various, some of the levels, some of the department heads came, but you'll see, uh, the change, and then you'll see a line through, it'd be one, two, or three changes, and behind that will be the narrative, which will reflect what we have done.
Mayor.
Yes?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I am baffled.
Yeah.
At, at, yes, sir, I am, at, at this point, because we're, we're talking about doing a budget amendment, is, is that, what, what are you proposing?
Yeah, at, at some point in time, budget adjustment, estimate.
Okay, has, has the staff been involved in this process?
No, no, I, I told you, at the time, I was questioning about it, and I said, well, I'll sit down and, and go through this budget line to line, and we came up with a proposal.
So how, how, how does a policymaking bu- buy, and this is a budget, is a policy of, of Mayor Council? How do we come to decisions and conclusions without vetting it through our, our finance department?
The finance department and, 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 uh, they had given us a budget, and I was challenged by virtue of, I had five hundred thousand, and, and I wanted to see what the, uh, what figures that I felt were, were reasonable for adjustments. And so, obviously, you've been knowing, you, I've been inviting you to participate.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not qualified to make those kinds of decisions, I think that those are decisions that should be made with conversations amongst the department heads, being your finance and, and your city administrator, and not city councilperson.
Anyway, uh, that's your, your proposal that you have before you, you have ample time for discussion, you can vote on it in November if you deem it necessary, but it does meet all the requirements that we had initially set out to meet, and then so.
Mayor, I'm really, I am really challenged and concerned with, with taking this process, this is different from anything that we've, we've ever done, so. I, I think in a minimum, there should be some input on the part of staff about, because we've just circumvented our professional.
because we've just circumvented our professional staff completely.
Well, you'll have every opportunity to you, and everybody has a copy. If they want to come down, I'll tell you why we did what we did.
We already have a majority for the process in this council. And so, for you to have already met with two councilpersons, and the recommendation is coming from the three of you-
Actually, well, they, they join in the discussion. They join in the discussion. I don't know either. I assume that they will support this, but I don't know that. Just up to them. They may have some reservations. I don't know. But this is a poll I put together. You could chuckle with some. Mr. Pruitt was there, and I appreciated his input. We looked at these line to line. We invited everybody to come and join us, and, and, uh, we invited you, I love, to come. And, and Elrod was there, but that's kind of where we are right now.
And I, again, I don't think it's the role of council to do this, but Mayor, I do have some, some quick questions here. Um, one, because it's always kind of been, well, actually, I have three quick questions. Does any of this involve the elimination of staff?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Number two, does any of this involve the monies that were allocated for communication to constituents by councilpersons?
You mean news, newsletter?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So you have gone in and made a recommendation that the money that I fought for for the past seven years to allocate to councilpersons to share information to their constituents, that's a part of what's being recommended as being removed?
Ms. Vincent?
Reduced.
Some reduced, and, and some may be removed, but I, uh, uh, and, and the reason we've done that, Ms. Vincent, any kind of work, including my newsletter, they are doing two things. They're mailing all that out. Maybe it costs a thousand dollars. Now, it costs ten dollars for it. In addition to that, last week, any newsletter that we might put together, they will produce the newsletter themselves, and, and that would apply to you and, and the events. So we, I'm removing a lot of those dollars, including posters, along those lines. Uh, I welcome any newsletter. I've been here seven years. I, I think that we've talked about it on a district basis, but you have an opportunity to discuss that openly, uh, in, in, in November. Having said that, thank you so much, and let's move down to eleven A, and, uh, Mr. Gardner. Change order, Blue Allen Construction, okay?
Very quickly now, um, Ron Cleveland and Associates, uh, who are doing our project management on the construction of the Zander Park, uh, as they go through their diligence, uh, has brought before us some cost savings from the first adjustment to be made about two, three weeks ago. It will save us some money, and based on some other onsite, um, work that is being done, they have been consulting Blue Allen, and so this is just an adjustment to save us right around forty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Forty, forty-two is the number that they've got in their, in their change orders scheduled. Um, that's a benefit to us, and so is that, we, we ask that y'all approve the change order.
You heard the recommendation. Anybody have a motion? Somebody have a thank you? Anybody have any more questions with Fred? His price, please restate the motion relative to item number eleven A.
The motion is to approve the change order, um, from the contract to the well and construction presented by Ron Cleveland, um, to approve this change order, which will be a savings of approximately forty-two thousand six hundred and five dollars. And, as presented tonight in your package.
And, folks, I have voted on that motion second. Those in favor?
Looks like six in favor.
How much?
Six.
Oh, I see. I, I didn't say, I knew you had to leave. Okay, I knew you were leaving. All right, six in favor. Thanks so much, ladies.
And Mayor, I'd like to, um, I'd like to say that that is a concerted effort on, on the part of the landscape architect that is with Ron Cleveland and Associates, and, um, and Ron Cleveland himself, working with Blue Allen to ensure us not only a better trail system, but more cost effective for us in the long run.
Anytime you say six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, that's a wonderful fact. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I looked at the minutes, and Ms. Vincent was not here at September fifteenth meeting, and I want to mention that, but, uh, the minute was good, and with that, I entertain the motion to be approved. And second?
Second.
And second. Anybody have any question? His price, please restate the motion as it relates to the minute, September fifteenth.
The motion is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting at September fifteenth.
Would you please vote at this time? And, those in favor?
Five, five in favor.
All right. Let's move down to item number twelve, folks. Executive session, real estate, OCGA, fifty dash fourteen dash three V one. Entertaining the motion, we're going to executive session.
Come in.
And I have a second. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions? His price, please restate the motion second.
I can't find that number.
Fifty, fourteen, three, V one.
Motion is to go into executive session for real estate, which is OCGA, fifty dash fourteen dash three V one.
Would you please, folks? All right. Thank you so much. That's six. Thank you. Folks, I don't think we're going to do it long. I'm not too far off, I mean, that's very cool. Entertaining the motion, go back into our regular meeting. So, thank you. And, and second. His price, you've got a motion, second on the floor.
The motion is to go back into our regular workout.
All those in favor, please indicate the raise of hand. We thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And for those in the audience, our good friend and our chief, if you don't have anything to report, okay? And with that, Mr. Administrator, give you an opportunity, anytime, Mr. Administrator. Ready to go on some? Oh, God, I love it. What about it, Madam?
Uh, just briefly, um, I met Fred and I and the mayor. I ambush them yesterday, y'all, and they, we had the best meeting ever. Um, I have, this is the memo that, um, the mayor asked for, looks at the, uh, the charter. And I, I think we had, I think that Fred and the mayor would tell you that we had a great conversation. And we, I get, what I wanted to do is talk to them about it first and to say, it seems it obviously impacts them most. And for them to be able to tell me, you know, look at it, tell me what do you think? What do you, what do you, what are your comments? What are your thoughts? What, what problems do you see in it? And so, we spent, what, an hour and a half or so talking about it? Um, and by then, the mayor and Fred were hugging each other and making plans to have breakfast once a week. So, I mean, I, I feel very encouraged and feel very happy, and I think we're, um, all on the same page, more or less. So, take this, read it, um, whatever questions you might have, let's talk about them next time. Or, or email me, call me. Um, but, but this is the promise memo. I'm sorry I've taken so long, but-
Yes, thank you, thank you, madam. Thank you, madam.
Work, you'll find it workable.
Thank you, Fred. Madam?
Just heard they, um, stopped me, relooking at number thirteen for the H and A bill. That is not cut and stung. They asked me today if we had a scheduled meeting, and I said no. So, they were, sorry, they sent out the first one, and they didn't, they didn't have an opportunity to talk to everybody. But they're looking at the thirteenth, but I'll let you know as soon as that is confirmed.
Is that all you have, Madam?
Yep, that's it.
Ms. Madam? Thank you so much. Marnie?
Um, no, Ms. Madison, I'd like to thank you for, um, Saturday, kids, I, I think, um, it was, um, very educational, and I enjoyed every minute. Um, and I would look forward to doing it again anytime you're having a, um, um, a historical walk. I would love to be a part, to hear your story. That was really amazing, the story.
Well, Cam, I, uh, it was a pleasure of mine, and I love young people. And I, I asked you, I said, "I wonder if," I was so old and senile, I didn't know what I was talking about. But I thought of a number of things, because Ms. Vincent was there too, and, and Casey, but I enjoyed it. And I added one of our council members on, and I said, "Thank you, Lord, for having me remember something like yesterday." So, we, it was fun. We'll do it again. I've got another group of kids from school, but the lady came to see me today, nineteen children, and they're kind of special type kids. And I'm going to really enjoy that. I'm working on that for the end of this month. And with those young people, we, we, we thank you for giving us that change. Yes, councilman?
Uh, I want to start.
Yes, sir. Ms. Madison?
Yes, the walk was beautiful, Mayor. I, I, I see your passion. I saw your heart, and I really enjoyed that as well. That was my first, and I hope you do take Casey's recommendation and mic yourself so that we can go ahead and get that in the library and wherever it was used for me.
It was, it was fun to have you and Cam and, and those children. You know, I, I go over my notes every time, and, and I wonder at the end, you know, well, I think of everything, two or three things I missed, but they wasn't all that important about Mr. Bill's life. Next time, I'll make sure I get that.
I have one other point real quick. I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that the Walk to End Alzheimer's is this weekend. Uh, and they, Bill, I'll just go ahead and send you guys an email on, on tomorrow. I'm sorry. It's, it's at the Fred Brown Municipal Complex there. So, uh, the Jerk Festival, wow.
Yeah.
I mean, towards the end of the day, I was just absolutely amazed with the level of diversity that was, was present. There was just a cross-section of all different nationalities, having great fun, great food, and great music.
Well, I, and I told Siri tonight, y'all may have seen her out there, and, uh, it just turned out, well, I, I was switching between the rock and hard place with a fifty-foot lift from my mother's house, they had LP gas and out of paint. And so I stayed with twelve twenty, and for three hours, I got home at three thirty trying to keep those men going, but I hated missing. I apologized to her. I told her, "Next year, we'll start at the front door."
The only thing is, they need a big sandbox.
That, that right.
They need a big sandbox so people can take their shoes off and, and squeeze and, and walk in the sand when they're playing the music.
Maybe a phone up in there.
Because all you can think about is, "I wish I was in the Caribbean."
Well, thank you all for being there. Thank you for your attention tonight, Mr. Gardner, our city clerk, city attorney, and Ms. Gina Riffey. And with that, entertaining the motion for adjournment, all in favor, say.